So we have called the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the open meeting of the Sioux Nebraska governing bodies. The city of Sioux is a body that in Nebraska only needs to act and conduct their business. It copies the Nebraska who needs to act and display on the North wall as a meeting facility as required. Disclosure and recording processes is posted in the main room. Which is an assignment sheet is available, we use main citizen address in the council. You're going to approach the podium, so your name and address for the clerk's record. Interact limit remarks to five minutes. Log bar should be directed to the mayor, and show the government by many appropriate response should be made. The city of Sioux reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Do you call approval?
Welcome.
Present.
Beck, Cameron, Coleman, Meller, Singleton, Schmidt.
Here.
Hendricks.
Present.
First item is even is consideration of approval of draft lines of August sixth, twenty nineteen.
Salute.
Thank you. We have a motion at second, you can register your votes. Please play the votes. Next, items two through seven consists of the consent agenda.
Salute.
Can I ask on number four, the city code, where are we at with some of those that are on there, are they making progress?
You'd have to ask specific ones to say whether we're making progress, so.
Is there particularly one that you're looking at?
Um, I think there was a couple of them that said that their deadlines were at the end of May. Um, so like four forty-four North Second, four thirty North Second. Um, and I think there was, what is this thing, don't know. Um, thirteen thirteen West Highway thirty-four. I bet somehow we just talked to Ed on, and see if there's progress coming from some of those.
Yep, we can talk to Ed, or we can have him come and give a report and discuss them specifically.
Okay. So.
You good? Uh, any questions or comments? Do you have a motion to approve? We've, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, you can register your votes. Please play the votes. Item number eight, consideration of request to exploit small American flats on city property, on Highway thirty-four, at the parade of flats area on September eleventh, twenty nineteen, recognizing the victims of the September eleventh, two thousand and one attacks. Greg, or Angela?
Angela's here from Corry, and so we'll let her speak to this project again.
Hi, um, Angela, uh, we did this project last year, I'm sure many of you remember. It is a memorial, uh, made up of two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven flags to represent the victims of the September eleventh, two thousand and one attacks. Um, we'll have volunteers set them up, probably around six AM that morning, take them down, probably around eight PM that night. Um, and we encourage the community to just stop by, take a moment to reflect and remember. Uh, I can answer any other questions.
Thank you, any questions or comments from the council?
And you do take volunteers to help set them up and take them down, I guess.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have a motion? A motion at second? Do you have any further discussion? Same number, you can register your votes, please display the votes. Thank you. Item number nine, consideration for recommendation to the Nebraska Control Commission as special designated bigger license issued to Tall Tree Tastings LLC, one twenty-two North Fifth Street Beatrice for an event at Harvest Hall on November ninth, twenty nineteen.
This is, um, Tall Tree Tasting's first request or application for the city, and so by ordinance, they have to go through this board briefly.
Any questions or concerns, comments?
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Same number, you can register your votes, please play the votes. Item number ten, acknowledge receipt of Airport Authority Resolution requesting levy authority for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year, Greg Butcher.
Yes, this is the first part of the process as we go through and confirm our budget. Airport Authority met, uh, earlier this month and reviewed their budget asking and needs. Um, and so they are requesting, uh, a similar levy allocation to what they requested the last few years, which I believe is point zero three, uh, five three cents, I believe. And so, but that equates to, in the resolution, as you'll note, that's a general fund request of a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-five, and an airport bond fund request of eight, fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Again, same levy request as the past prior years, so.
Any questions or comments from the council? Do we need a motion then to, to receive that, Kelly?
I see it acknowledged receipt.
Yeah.
Salute.
Second, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Same number, you can register your votes, please play the votes. All right, item eleven, consideration for awarding bid for a three to four point of five to twelve point forty-seven KB industrial substation construction project to IES Commercial Incorporated, Jake Kabasha.
Good evening, uh, so we had this on the agenda last meeting, uh, this was, um, I was directly following the bid letting, uh, I think you've all seen the bid results, and we were giving IES a little bit more time to, uh, basically confer with Kelly and discuss any, uh, potential contract changes that they were requesting. Um, I don't think those talks have really gone anywhere. Um, so I would request that we go ahead and award the contract to IES and forward with the contract that was originally in the bid.
Questions or comments for Jake?
And, and I could just give a little bit back around to you. I, I just expressed to her that, that contract, the way it was written, uh, doesn't typically get modified. It was part of the bid document, so we were concerned that if we were gonna make modifications uh, to that contract, then we would have to let other bidders do that as well, so. Uh, I expressed that to her, and she seemed to understand that. And I haven't heard anything back to the contrary, that they were, uh, opposing that. We haven't gotten any communication that they're gonna withdraw their bid, uh, at this point, so. I'm, I'm fine with proceeding as how the contract was originally drafted.
Any other questions or comments? Move to award the bid, uh, IES contract. Do we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Same number, you can register your votes, please display the votes. Item twelve, consideration for awarding bid for culvert improvement project to ME Collins Contracting, Jake.
Um, yes, uh, so this is for the south levy or farm levy that's just south of the Big Blue River, um, just adjacent to Highway fifteen, um, bridge. Uh, so initially, we were looking at getting quotes, um, on this project, and that was before the flood happened. After the flood happened, there was significant damage to this area in addition to what was already, uh, wrong there. Uh, so we went ahead and, um, keep up the bid documents and, because this became much, a much larger project. Um, so after doing that, we got bids going, and, um, this is what we ended up with. Worked with Collins several times, good contractor, very good at culverts. Um, my estimate was around eighty thousand, they were a little bit lower than that, so it's good to see that. Yeah, I would recommend the word.
Any questions or comments from the council, yes, John?
Any of my questions on this, this has been around here for years, we've had many discussions on this. I hate to throw seventy-six thousand dollars away if we're not gonna maintain this minimum use levy because of all the trees and erosion that's happened because of trees. We have a blowout around sewer pipe, but we got trees all down that. I hate to give us seventy-six thousand dollars and then a year from now, we have where trees are at and blowout again. I, I'm just throwing that out there. If the city's gonna maintain this now going forward, go in there and do some work, so we don't lose what we're gonna invest in this. I mean, that's, that's huge.
Sue?
Jake, wasn't this breach kind of caused or moved along by the, the main break that we had? Prior to that, it looks like it's about the same size.
Sid, that was there before the flood.
What's that?
The hole was there before the flood.
Right, but wasn't that kind of caused by the break and the wind wave and the main break?
The flood that took place at the same time as the main break, that flood is the flood that caused the, in there, there was a culvert with a flap gate. That culvert collapsed. The culvert gave way, it was rusted and old. The culvert gave way, that caused the erosion issue on top of it. And then once it opened itself up, the river, when it floods, just swirled itself through, ate away at that culvert. Finally, that whole culvert during the last flood event completely gave way finally, as we were preparing to go do that work, because we had had quotes and lined up a different contractor, because we thought it'd be significantly cheaper just to get it filled back in and slide the culvert, a new culvert in. And so then we had the major, you know, historic flood. That caused a complete collapse and failure of that culvert, the rusted old one. I don't know how old that original culvert was in the first place. And some of that's just, there was no, nothing we were gonna do other than go through and remove the culvert and put a new one back anyway, you weren't gonna save that old one.
We were fighting that for years, so there was a flapper valve even at the Tentico S curve right there. And the city had come in there when we had flooding before, uh, because somebody even, uh, we don't know who, but welded a chain to the flapper valve to keep it open all the time. And Tentico was potentially getting flooded at that time. So we've had issues in that for the last how many years? But it was already eroded, but past history, you know, that's not really classified as a levy. But if we're gonna put money into this, you know, it makes me nervous because of all the trees, that next year, we can be doing it again because we're not maintaining it.
John, to your point, what kind of maintenance would that look like? I mean, does anybody here have information on that?
There's definitely be tree growth, that would definitely be a concern, because, I mean, roots in, in, through a levy is not good, but, you know, if it were core levy, those would be cleared. Kept clear of the levy, kinda like the other one, and that is core levy.
And the other hard part is we, for some odd reason, that right-of-way is massive there. That's actually all state property down there. It's all owned as part of the right-of-way adjacent to the river. And so it's one of the reasons when we contacted NDOT, they said, well, pursuant to our maintenance unit, that's your problem. Because it's in the city. Once you guys annex down there, it is adjacent to the city, it's right-of-way for the highway access. And so that's how we got stuck with it in the first place. Um, but there's probably some issues that if we were to not keep up with it or say we're done and we're just gonna close the levy off, there's a whole bunch of other issues. So ultimately, we do need to keep track of it. Um, we'll make sure that Jake versus Meller has approved to have a maintenance plan for it. Because we also want to make sure that that one up by Tentico, by the S curve is maintained. Because that's a bigger issue than this one even.
I mean, I'll, I'll approve it, but I, I want us to add some type of maintenance program with this motion to go back there to maintain, so we're not throwing our money away.
Could we make a contingent upon future presentation of such a plan to the council? Because, I mean, you come up with it right this second.
I agree, I, I would agree with that. Because, like I said, I just don't wanna see us throw money away, because next year it could happen again. You have tree root, the water, erosion around that tree root, and we could have the same problem, so. But I agree with you on that.
Can we not do that?
I agree. I just want some accountability.
I think we could, um, I, I think to your point, I think you could approve this tonight, and then we can internally look at what a maintenance plan would look like. I'm guessing the trees are probably the primary issue, um, for the few other issues, but we can take a look at that and address that. If you want that included, included in a future report from the administrator, um, I'm sure we can have that as well. But to Kelly's point, probably don't wanna tie them together at this point, Sid?
Jake, that's like, I think I vertical and agricultural levy, right?
Yeah.
And then my understanding is somewhere to the west, it, it stops.
Yes.
But it, when it is functioning, does it actually do anything if it ends over on the west end?
Yeah, I mean, the river gets so high, and then, yeah, it's, it doesn't work because then it essentially breaches on the west side.
On the west side.
To get around, and that's.
And fills in from that side.
Yeah, so it's not a hundred-year levy like the cores or by one that we have. I don't know what standard they built it to, but.
I know.
But it does do something, it does do something good, right?
Yes. Some top one, it does do some good. And, um, your water main break comments, uh, we do have a fourteen-inch water main that is pretty well exposed at this point, that's adjacent to the area that's completely scoured and eroded. So we need to do something this year, um, for it to be covered up so it doesn't freeze, uh, this winter. So, um, we do need to move fairly quickly on this and get it done. But my understanding, uh, it does function as a bucket.
John, do you have something?
And then to that, that, when we, I worked with our prior, uh, billion inspector, when we got the one point eight million dollar grant, we changed that whole flood process around that road. The road is close to being a hundred-year, but it's not certified. The, the pat, the compaction rate, everything was designed by the Corps and by, uh, the upper Big Blue. Mr. Farmer, um, was involved in this and the whole design of that road. So we benefited when we did the road, uh, to the west, because right, the road used to stop, I don't know if you remember where the old railroad tracks used to be, that's where it would hook around. So now, when they did that road, they took the water to the west. And the road is basically a hundred-year, but it, it's not certified. Um, and, and to my point too, years ago, we wouldn't do anything, the city wouldn't do anything to this agricultural levy because it wasn't core certified, and so why should we support it? So now, here we are, we're back at this again fifteen years later. So now we gotta make, we gotta come up with a contingency plan, so we're not throwing our money away. So I agree with Kelly, I have no problem coming back at this later, but we can't let it drop if we're putting money into something.
Well, I would make a motion to approve it with the understanding that we will hear a report on the maintenance plan later.
Kelly doesn't like that.
I didn't say it would be mandatory. Can I word it that way?
I would, you would have to separate.
Okay, just, I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
A motion at a second.
Clarification?
Yes.
So that means we could request as an agenda item, a plan for this specific project at a future council meeting and adopted that way.
You can just do that at the end here, when I ask for a future request, if you wanted to, or someone could. So we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Yes?
Just, just, just a quick question. Their start date is November, how long does it take to complete this? I mean, when you brought up the comment about an exposed pipe and freezing.
Yeah.
So, any idea on timetable?
Uh, it'll probably be two weeks.
Not, not now, I'll process it.
Do you have any extra blankets in your house?
No.
My dad was having flowers, he wants to, that first freeze, you gotta watch it.
I didn't know if it was a ninety-day ride, it wasn't gold, it was, how long does it take?
So we do have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Same number, you can register your votes. Please play the votes. Item thirteen, consideration to be task ordered for JEO Consulting Group to prepare a right-of-way dedication flat and declaration of use documents for the Seward Carroll K Boulevard Beta Two Hill Crest Project, Jake?
Yeah, uh, so I was informed by NDOT and JEO that they needed, um, that NDOT needed, uh, declaration of use. Uh, so we need to declare the proposed right-of-way as right-of-way, and, um, I think there's a, there's like a garden that's getting dedicated as well. And then, I don't know if it's separate right-of-way, or if we just designate the corridor, but then the six-foot wide sidewalk that goes down and meets the trail with this project, that also has to be dedicated, a special dedicated use for NDOT to move forward with all their documents and file this thing up. And last I heard, which was an email early yesterday, is that they're looking at a letting of October for this project.
And construction would realistically be when?
Next year about this time.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on thirteen, yes, Sid?
Um, this is probably for you guys. What's the status? I know that some of the East Ridge homeowners were having some issues or some stuff was hung up with, with some of their property that may, they may have to lose or get sold or whatever, where's that at?
The state was in the process of right-of-way acquisition, and so they began that, I have my notes. It was last spring they started that. Um, we approved ninety percent plans here at city council in November, and then probably early in two thousand and nineteen, that's when they started doing notification for right-of-way. And part of that is the fact that we have like a tenant leasing our property, so they're required, since the project's on top of that, to notify our leaseholder, our farm. There's a separate VC on the agricultural ground that's owned by the homeowners association. They have to be contacted and notified, and then they have to contact and notify, uh, the homeowners association itself. And so that process took approximately, just to get people notified, I think up through May, or about, Jake? I just came notifications out and tracking down like who tenants were and things like that, so that they knew who all the parties involved were. And so they're, that's what they're in the process of right now, and NDOT is trying to negotiate with them to see if they can require, acquire. Um, it's not a very big section, it's like the bottom southeast corner, just.
No, it's not a very, very big section, but, you know, last I heard, based on the, the email that I got, all indication is that they, we can move forward with bid letting very soon.
So, yeah, the state will dictate that process, and at some point, if they're not able to come to an agreement with the leases and landholders, then they'll turn it over to Kelly. And then it'll be Kelly's consideration to move forward to go into condemnation and domain.
But that would come back before council?
I believe so, yes. Yep. We don't have any authority to file any actions or anything without the authority of the council.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion then?
Move to approve the task order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Same number, please register your votes, please play the votes. Item fourteen, consideration to accept comprehensive water study and prepare and presented by Olson, Jake?
Yep.
All right. So, I believe you all have this, water study. Um, if you look on page one, uh, one and two, it's a pretty good summary of essentially what our system is doing, uh, what the status is, and then the findings, which is on page two. So essentially, Greg, you just want me to hit some of the highlights, or?
I, Jake was at train today, so I did run through this. If you want me to run through the highlights real fast in this?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Uh, the highlights that are in here is, uh, our last water study, I believe, was two thousand and eleven, ten? Completed in two thousand and ten, adopted by this body in two thousand, January two thousand and eleven. So this is an update that you included in the budget for this current fiscal year we're completing. So going in, the findings, as you can read, we're using a one percent annual growth for our measure on this. That is in, uh, cohesion with our comprehensive plan. That's also what the measure was that was used there, uh, looking back over data, uh, for a number of years. It does note in the findings that, uh, the per capita demand is actually down in the city since the last time they measured this. And they noted that that's due to, um, basically to the efficiency of fixtures and things people are putting in in new homes and retrofitting old homes as those fail out. And so that efficiency level is causing that with new water sprinkler systems and all the other things that we see that there's continually out there in the market. Another one is I think people are just more cognizant of it. Uh, and then those are the two things they noted. They see, they said they've seen that all across municipal systems across the state that they work with, that they've seen this kind of reduction, uh, in per capita use. Uh, they know, one of the big things that they identify in there, uh, is the ten-state standard that they talk about for fire protection, so this will be important to the fire department. Uh, that water mains should have a minimum six-inch diameter. Eighty-five percent of our system currently has six-inch diameter, the other remaining fifteen percent is smaller. We have some systems all the way down to two-inch, correct? Um, and so we'll be working through, that is identified in here. It goes through everything else, it kind of, it just identifies the reservoirs and the systems that we have, the wellfield production, um, and then it notes at the bottom, which we've been working on for a while, that a new well is being investigated, the southwest wellfield, uh, to provide relief to the two other wellfields. And so that's been in the works for nearly two and a half years since I've been here now, so. Those are kind of the big highlights in regards to that. Uh, and then, uh, a big element of the analysis and the findings is this, is looking at, um, our ability to provide adequate elevated storage. And Jake and Tim will talk more about this as we get into it. Um, during peak days, um, and that's if the water treatment plant for any purpose would go offline, we wouldn't be able to pump water back into them. You wanna have so much of a level of water within those systems elevated, uh, to provide water, and also have correct pressure, because that's how we're getting pressure throughout the system is the elevated tanks. So they talk about that. Um, and one of the things that we do have in there is that we are able to supplement our current storage with the water treatment plant. There's a significant amount of storage at the treatment plant, but again, if the pumps aren't available to get it up there, it has no impact on, on, uh, what am I thinking of, pressures. So that was a big element of what they looked at. So then I'll walk you through the recommendations, and then we can hit where you wanna go. Uh, but the first recommendation there on page two, uh, is due, uh, this is in regards to the water tower, the downtown water tower, which is the two hundred thousand gallon water tower. Due to presence of lead in the coating system on the outside of, uh, the tower and the number of miscellaneous repairs that are needed on the downtown water tower, it is becoming cost prohibitive to continue maintenance on that tank, and the city should consider demolition of the tank and construction of a new larger tank, uh, somewhere else within the system, as we identify, and another project that is, that we would do this. Uh, and they identified on page thirty-nine, uh, potentially what that would look like based on the measures outlined in the study. Uh, but that'd be approximately a five hundred thousand gallon tank, um, and with a cost of two point five million. And, uh, we can get into more details on that, but that's kind of the highlights of that one. The second recommendation is the state should start budgeting to have the north tower blasted and recoded on the interior and overcoated on the exterior in approximately twenty twenty-six. One of the things we talked about is, that's a long-term project that pumps up every so many years, so we wanna start thinking about that now, so that we can keep the, the quality of that facility going for years to come. Third recommendation is the city should consider adding hydrants in several locations identified in the study to address potential gaps, um, again, important to the fire department. Uh, there's a map that's included in here that just has gaps, they provided permanent, I think it's, uh, what's the distance on that, you know? On the radius and the hydrants?
About four hundred.
Four hundred feet, about three hundred foot hydrant buffer. It's a, if you wanna look at the map, it's on figure seven. There's a nice little map on there, it'd be right after page twenty. And it identifies the locations of, uh, new hydrants. And so we'll address that, the budget that you'll be getting here soon, addresses it over two years. Um, that will work to get all those hydrant, those hydrants put back in to the system. Third recommendation, the state should begin a replacement program to start upsizing aging water mains that are less than six inches in diameter. Replacement projects should prioritize water mains that have shown history of maintenance issues. And this gets into something that's been really important in why we wanted to bring this study forward and get started on a new one. Essentially, the way me and Jake and Tim have defined it in regards to infrastructure like this is, if you think of water mains as a hundred-year infrastructure, it may not be, but some of them have been around over a hundred years. Some of these water mains are a hundred years old. If you have a hundred years' infrastructure, and that's the lifetime of it, you need to replace one percent of your system every single year for a hundred years, just to keep up. Now, that's not cost-effective in regards to bringing people out, activating them. We don't replace water mains on a large scale with our crews. So what you wanna do is bundle those together, and you can see it in the cost benefit analysis and priority analysis that you put together in here. Bundle those together and then complete them in chunks over time to try and keep up with that, essentially what that one percent is. So if you wait three years, you wanna look at three percent, you wait five years, you wanna hit five percent, which can be a significant amount of linear feat of water main for replacement, repair, whatnot. So we've had them outline that, and then, just like we did with the electric department for the last ten years, we're gonna hold all the departments and Tim and his crew and me and Jake, uh, as long as you, with your guidance and approval, to the stuff that's listed in here. We know things pivot, and we'll keep track of it, but this is our guide for the next ten years approximately in that project priority list, and we'll work through those problems every year with you to identify what projects are in the budget year. You'll see them, one of these projects in the next budget year we'll propose to you here. And then we'll just walk. And then we'll just walk through them and knock them out, and keep working on them, and then get a new study done when we get the projects done and we feel we need to re- reallocate. The last one being, uh, not as, not a huge one, but it's good to identify these, is new twelve-inch mains. These are the large mains that feed major developments and growth of the city. New twelve-inch mains should be installed on the north and southeast edges of the city to support future growth. And those are identified with the comprehensive plan, looking at where we think the residential growth is. Uh, I think we're good on the commercial and the southern portion for now with the design of the rail campus and how we'll expand that. But in regards to how we identified growth within the city and the comp plant, as you know, north of Waverly Road, and then potentially east, uh, and southeast of Ridge Run, moving out on the highway, on the north side of Highway thirty-four, was the predominant areas we're identifying, where we do not have any water main right now. So, um, those projects are identified here too. And so those are the predominant recommendations. Uh, we can get specific details with you on any of those recommendations or anything that was involved in here, but stop me here for now.
Did it touch on anything with the treatment plant, the wastewater?
No, it, it does identify, uh, I think it, Tim can kinda get into that. It does identify the membranes and the capacity as it's running through it.
So, you said wastewater?
Wastewater.
Okay, wastewater is a separate study.
Oh, sorry.
That's a separate study.
Yeah, it's also water. They actually did give us the final version of that with Monday.
Correct.
Yeah, and so we, we're gonna bring that to you as well, but we literally just got that.
Okay.
So wastewater, different, different study.
And then there'll be another wastewater study. There's one study just for the plant, it's like this thick. And then there'll be another one in regards to the actual infrastructure system that's also coming. Yes.
One will be the sanitary sewer study, which covers the whole city. And then a separate package will be the wastewater treatment upgrades.
Is this list roughly in the order of priority?
The one on page two, the recommendations, no.
So what's your priority list?
The priority list can be found on page forty-two in regards to the water mains. The recommendation, hydrants is a safety one. Like I told you before, you'll see it in the budget. We're gonna address it over two years and take care of all the hydrants that are identified on there. Uh, we have a specific funding source for that. We would like to, the water tower is such a large capital cost, that we just wanna engineer and work through the cost and really get it designed and select a location, if potentially that's the route the council wants to go ultimately. Get that all done and out in front of you, and then make some bigger decisions about how we pay for it, when we wanna implement it, what the li- the direct lifetime of the one that's downtown is. But we wanna have some engineering specifically done on that, because we may find that due to a location issue, we have a lot more costs. So they'll identify that. Uh, there's a potential one in here, but when they come out and do the full study, just to design that. And that's what our recommendation for this upcoming year is, is to do the study on the tower, but not implement it this year. And then if we go back through on page forty-two-
You want buzzards or out buzzards, I mean, there's a lot of options.
Turkey vultures, turkey vultures.
One thing we need to consider is, when we take everything off that tower, what kind of interruption we're gonna have with, uh, what are you gonna say?
TV.
Sure.
Yeah, and we are, uh, as far as everyone's leasing space on there, we have to make sure we accommodate all of those as well.
Because, you know, when they did the study, even with all the repeaters and trying to get them in sequence together, we'd hate to have to take everything down, and then we don't have communication.
No, absolutely.
So I don't wanna-
Yeah, no.
That'll work through it.
You require that analysis.
And they've worked, I mean, that'll be part of the engineering process. They're used to doing this with other communities and sorting through that. And we'll have, uh, Kelly check in on the lease parameters and stuff. Page forty-two has your project prioritization. This goes through the analysis that you can read through in regards to cost benefit, looking at different analysis of the number of water main breaks we've had on some of those lines, and then also the cost effectiveness of other elements. And working through with Jake and Tim and his entire crew and identifying projects, the project you'll see prioritized first, uh, will actually be that upsize four-inch. It's listed as project number four, it's not fourth on the list. Um, but upsize four-inch main to six-inch main along Highway fifteen from Lincoln to North Street, and also replenish the six-inch main with a twelve-inch main under Hillcrest, fifth to sixth. The reason that's identified first and you'll, it will be coming in your budget this year is due to the fact that the potential widening of Highway fifteen is coming down the pipeline, right in this area. And we don't wanna find out that we have to rip up that project after they just put it down to then do this project. We also have a number of breaks on the northern end of that line. And the other one is in your one- and six-year plan, you have Hillcrest to be redone and reconstructed. And by putting this in underneath, we also don't mess up the Hillcrest reconstruction project when that goes. So we're just putting this T in there and then moving and running it all the way to North Avenue. And so that's how we identified it. And then we also just broke this down into a ten-year process. And under a ten-year process, that three-hundred-and-eighty is about what we would spend on each layer of this in one year. And so we felt like that was our priority in discussing. Again, and that's how you'll do this. You'll have to, we'll give you our recommendations as administration, but ultimately, it's up to this body to greenlight what projects you want done and for what reasons, so.
But this is the roadmap, basically, that we want you to see all the, all the signposts, so you know where we're headed. And so we're not surprised when, when something comes to you, um, for your consideration that you, you were at least aware that that was gonna be coming at some point in the next year. Any other questions?
So we need a motion to approve the acceptance of the right?
Or just accept, yeah, most accept the-
I'll make a motion to accept.
A motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying not to rush through your votes, please weigh the votes.
I'm gonna walk him back campus, call him in, see what he's got here.
All right, item number fifteen, cemetery report.
Um, sorry, I talked so much to the other one, maybe I get a chance to pull that up on my computer here, I'll just-
Hey, I should learn to report.
I'll just hit the highlights. We're, we're, the big one right now is we're going really strong down at the rail campus. Uh, we acquired the Eggerd property and closed on that. That house will be moved within a week now. Uh, and then Van Kirk will move into their phase into that project. They laid concrete, did they finish to Jake, Jake, on laying concrete?
Fine finish.
So the answer is just say no. Okay, there you go. So they're out there laying concrete, and that will essentially, other than grading and some other work in the thirty-acre site, water, wastewater, and all that's already in.
Correct.
Stormwater.
Correct.
And so then they'll move into the Eggerd property and undertake the Boulevard entry. So keep in your, keep in your head, we're gonna name that soon. We're gonna plow it all out, be done with that, so.
Yeah, that will be coming down the line.
But they're moving the house?
They're moving the house, yes. Yep, and they got-
They're playing there today?
Yeah, they got all the permits, they were moving trees back and, and did everything, so they were very timely when they said they would do that, so. Last one is I think we'll have a new officer, Officer May, uh, will graduate on Friday. And so, uh, he'll be on duty after he takes a little bit of break for all the extra time that he's got going. So we're excited to have him on board, and we'll see him this fall. I can answer any questions here.
He's not, a motion to the-
I approve it.
Motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying not to rush through your votes, please weigh the votes. John, do you have any future requests for council?
So, my, my action on this is, I, I would like to have an agenda. Since we're going to invest in this agricultural levee that is south of Orshlands, I would like to have the city come back, or the street department come back with a maintenance slash contingency plan to maintain that agricultural levee.
Anyone else, Eddie? Seeing no one else? All right, um, Jonathan, do you have any upcoming events we should know about?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, we have, uh, coming Thursday here, the twenty-second, we have coffee and contacts and business after hours. Uh, two for the price of one at Seward and Lipton, we encourage you to come and, uh, mingle with fellow businesspeople here, um, in the community. Uh, Thursday, August twenty-ninth, will be our housing study listening sessions. Um, we have sessions in Milford, Seward, and Utica. And then we also have at noon with our major employers, um, through, throughout the county. We'll be participating as well to get that feedback directly from employers. Um, on Monday, September ninth, you should have received an invitation from our office. Um, this is an invitation-only soft opening for our new friends at Locke Casino in downtown Seward. Um, if you'd like to taste and see, uh, how things are coming along for them, we'd encourage you to RSVP to our office. And it's open to council members, um, the business community. Um, they've invited law enforcement as well, they like to build those relationships, uh, with the, with the community. And so would ask that you consider joining us on Monday, September ninth, uh, with that from five to seven. And of course, our annual night flight, Saturday, September twenty-first, at the airport. Appreciate your consideration, uh, to join us at that, on community event as well. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Jonathan. Want you to do anything else, what you know about, is your motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Thank you. Motion in a second, to rush through your votes, please weigh the votes. Thank you all.